I think we're close enough to nine o'clock to start. Will you all stand with me for a moment? We're going to have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you today that we can come together and do your county business, Lord. I pray you'll bless each decision made here today, bless each leader here that's involved in all this business of the county. I pray you protect our first responders today throughout the county, Lord, and heal our nation and heal our county, Lord, of the virus that's going around and be with the ones that are sick, that are affected by it today, and heal them, Lord, and heal this land. All these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone, to Titus County Commissioners Court. We've got a Friday meeting today because of our holiday on Monday, and that makes it a good day, if it happens to be my favorite day of the week. It is the 8th of October, 2021. It's just after 9:00 a.m. We're meeting here in the Titus County Courthouse. Item number one is our time for public comments, should there be any. This is your opportunity to talk to the commissioners about any non-agenda items. You're also welcome to address any agenda items as we get to those. Anyone here want to take advantage of public comment time? Then we'll move on to consider, in item number two, our minutes from our September 27th meeting. That was our second major meeting of the month of September, and we've got a set of minutes that's been prepared that needs your consideration and hopefully approval.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchment. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, we have a presentation as we get from time to time from Callie Zeller and their group out there at the Ag Extension Office, and she's brought with her a couple of guests today to talk about the importance of 4-H Week. Since this is National 4-H Week, and we are privileged to have a good, strong 4-H in this community, so welcome, Callie, and welcome to your young associates there, and we're all ears.
Well, thank you, guys, for letting us be here.
Is that on? Just make sure. Tap it. He says it is. You may not hear it as a strong magnification of your voice, but it allows people that are going to watch this on Facebook to hear you clearly.
Well, thank you, guys, for letting us come here today to Commissioners Court. We're really happy to be here with Titus County 4-H, and it is National 4-H Week, October 3rd through the 9th, and we wanted to take some time to bring some of our Titus County 4-H members to Commissioners Court so that they can share some of their experiences with 4-H and share their passion with you guys and let them tell you a little bit about themselves. We have a really great group of 4-H members here in Titus County. As the county extension agent here in Titus County, the Texas 4-H is tied to the Texas A&amp;M University System as well as Texas A&amp;M AgriLife, and so that's a really special part of my job is being able to work with the 4-H youth in Titus County. The theme this year for National 4-H Week is Find Your Spark, and what a blessing it is to be a county extension agent and work with these 4-H members here in Titus County. They have hit the ground running since the summertime before schools even started with officer trainings, getting their livestock projects ready, and so I am incredibly proud of them. And they have been extremely busy the last two weeks, whether it's the East Texas State Fair, the State Fair of Texas, the Titus County Fair, they've done an incredible job. And so I'm going to turn the mic over to them and let them tell you who they are and what their passion is. And 4-H. So I'm going to introduce Keely Gibson and Trevor Gibson. I know we don't have a lot of 4-H members with us here today, but they've been missing lots of school here lately for all these extracurricular activities, but the ones we do have here are incredible 4-H members.
Hi, I'm Keely Gibson, and I breed pigs, show pigs, I do plan ID and livestock judging. My pig that I showed, that I showed, that sounds weird, but that I showed this year at the Titus County Fair is actually one that I bred. Quite a few of the ones that we bred this year were actually at the Titus County Fair.
And show rabbits, plan judging.
Very good. Did y'all win anything? Did you win anything at the fair?
I'm a real champion of rabbits.
Hey, hey, hey. They ain't playing.
These kids did a fabulous job, not only at the Titus County Fair, working together as a club, helping each other, bringing their equipment in. I know one time I picked up a fan to help some of the kids, and there were kids out of nowhere coming to help each other and move things in, and they really, really work as a team, and I'm proud to be their extension agent. Like Trevor said, he was reserve grand champion with the meat cans at the Titus County Fair for his rabbits, and then he has been breeding her own pigs and did a fantastic job showing and raising them, and they're really true leaders within our county 4-H program and within our community, so I'm so proud to have them here.
Awesome. Can I ask them a trick question, see how sharp they are? What are the four Hs?
It's R, T, N.
You got it. Okay. Good deal. Well, we thank you for coming, and congratulations, Trevor. And are y'all brother and sister?
Yes.
All right. Well, very good. We appreciate your participation in making, helping keep our 4-H strong here in Titus County. It's been around a long time, and we wanted to be here for a lot longer time. So y'all have a good weekend. Do y'all have school on Monday?
No.
No? Good deal. We don't either. All right. Thank you, Callie.
Thank you, guys. We've got some cupcakes for you guys that we're going to give to you. But thank you so very much for your support. It means the world to us, and we look forward to growing our program and building this in this town.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Let me have him come cakes, and I'll do some distributing. Just let me take the whole thing there out. Okay? You want to do it that way?
Oh, hey, Callie, that reminds me, or actually, James reminded me, we have a proclamation here that we want to sign for you, and it's going to be signed by all of the commissioners, and this is a Find Your Spark proclamation.
Thank you.
Dana, were you in 4-H?
No.
No, were you as a child?
No.
Well, you should have been.
I know.
All right. We're going to sign this proclamation designating October 3 through 9 of 2021 as National 4-H Week in Texas and commend the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women, such as Callie, who have made the program a success. So I will put my signature on there. Do you want this back, or is this just for us to file in the minutes?
I have that copied out.
You want the original, or do you want a copy?
Either one. Thank you. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
All right, let me pass that on down there.
Thank you, Callie, for doing a good program.
Appreciate it. Appreciate what you're doing.
Couple more signatures. All right, I've had a lot of pressure on me to rearrange this agenda here, and we're going to let Byron with Bain talk about, I assume, this DynaPak machine. Am I pronouncing that right?
Yes, sir.
We're going to jump down to item number 11 so that we can get Byron on about his busy day, and we're going to consider and possibly approve the purchase of this 2012 DynaPak double drum roller at a cost of $49,959.36 by Precinct 3 and Precinct 4. We tabled this previously because we wanted a little more time to actually get it, give it a chance to be bid, if there was anyone else that had a competitive bid that they wanted to offer up, because, as you'll recall, we had actually a higher gross price that was reduced by some rentals that we had paid in. Did we receive any other bids?
No.
We did not receive any other bids. Byron, what do we need to know here today before we consider approval?
Well, I think we've pretty much talked about the equipment. You've had it rented for, I believe, three, four, five months. That rate went against the purchase price we bid on it. Just like to thank the court and the county, the opportunity to let us, you know, do and meet your equipment needs, and appreciate your business, and appreciate the 4-H presentation this morning. I mean, kids, when we all, us older guys started with 4-H and then owning the FFA program, I never thought that parliamentary procedure and speaking in front of people would help, but when you get into life, you'll learn, and you'll use that. And just like you guys, parliamentary procedure, you know, a lot of people don't understand. They want to know who Robert is, you know, when you go by Robert's Rule of Order. Anyway, thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to serve you if you ever need any help, but thank you for allowing me to speak just a minute.
You bet. Thank you for being here.
Any of y'all have any questions for me?
Why are you in a hurry?
Sir?
That's none of your business. That's none of your business.
No comment. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Byron.
All right. Well, we've been over the details here. Sounds like we're ready to purchase this. We've gone through the necessary posting procedure. There is only one bid, at least only one competitive bid here, and so now we're down to the decision. Are we ready to make the purchase on this DynaPak double drum roller? If so, I'll entertain your motion.
I'll make that motion.
Ma'am?
Can I?
Sure you can.
Bain submitted two bids. It's for the same piece of equipment. It's just a question of whether or not we can pay five months of rentals or six months of rentals. We have paid six months of rentals, so the actual purchase price now is $46,930.55 because we had to postpone this for a month, so we had to make another rental payment on it.
Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I've got the invoice here for you.
So we chipped away a little bit more of the purchase price, dollar for dollar, I guess, towards that purchase price, so now it's the official purchase price at this point after payment of those rents, $46,930. All right. Did I get a motion? Dana made a motion to make this purchase.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchment. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Byron.
Thank you, ma'am.
Byron?
Good day.
Larry, would it be helpful to you if we bumped you up in this agenda?
How much was it?
Birthday, cutting into his birthday.
I'm going to go ahead and get to your item here.
I have a couple of the titles as well.
Okay. Well, if it's your birthday, you need to get to celebrating and have that lunch ready. Larry Short is here, and we're going to move to item number seven. This is to consider and possibly approve the Lost Pines, Texas, or is it TX? How do you refer to it?
Just Lost Pines.
Lost Pines. Lost Pines TX LLC is the official legal name. This is a subdivision, apparently a really nice subdivision in Precinct 2, located there on Bob Sandlin. It's like, what, nearly 70 acres out there?
79,000.
And I have not had a chance to see this. Commissioner Fitch has been out there. What do we need to know about this? We have a good thorough packet. We have the Platts. We have blessings by Clint Bain. Everything to me seems well in order. It's been really done well, and it sounds like it's a subdivision that is a real Cadillac piece of property.
It's going to be an asset to the county. I'm telling you, it's really nice. The road system in there is awesome. There's a plan to put it in through a trail that's just flat all the way back to a ridge at the lake. It's just, it's beautiful. So everything's good. Clint Bain worked hard on all this to help guide us through it, and we got everything together in order, and I'm excited to approve this Platte and this subdivision.
So all of our requirements for the subdivision checklist have been met?
Yes.
What about, tell us about internal roads and how we're dealing with that?
So our internal roads will be built. He's going to get the road bond, of course, and there are several huge natural, I mean, old, old century oaks growing on this property, and this road winds through these trees. There's a couple of really neat features about the road where it will split and go around some tree structures in the property, which is really awesome. So as far as it being flat and level all the way, there's no hills and bad drainage issues at all. Really fortunate of that, and the road's going to be awesome.
Do we have cul-de-sacs in here?
Maybe one at the very end. One at the end. Snakes through the whole property, and really nice. And so also, the entrance is going to be several lots in the future, so quite a bit of development will go on there, so.
Is this a gated community?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How many total lots will be out there on this 670?
Eight, one, and twelve, and we've got a 28-foot, or like this interior.
Twenty, so these are big lots, pretty.
These are three to seven acre lots.
Very nice. Anything else you want to tell us?
I'm just really excited to be out here. I've got a house next door in Grand Banks that I built six years ago, and, you know, we live in Dallas, but my grand always had, you know, a house up here, and that property came available next door, so I'm a contractor in Dallas, but commercial work and COVID is just white hot, because nobody's back in offices still. So I decided maybe we'll build a house or two for a couple of years in the coming term. Those way, I'm there for 60, so.
Who knows when?
It's pretty peaceful out there.
Any issues with our requirements of the subdivision regulations that are a rub?
Yes, my goal.
Very good. Okay. Commissioner Fitch says we're all good. It appears to me that we're ready to approve this. Clint Bain says we're ready to approve this. They have a professional study done here related to the drainage and the sewage, so I think it's ready. If you have any questions that you want answered, you've got the owner here, you've got Commissioner Fitch.
Mr. Bain, Mr. Fitch, it's a little over what was expected of that, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
He's been out there every time I call him, hours, so just want to say thank you.
Good. Thank you.
We're all going to be experts on this out here. It's going to be nice. It's good. Good stuff.
All right.
Make that motion to approve it.
Commissioner Fitch makes a motion asking you to approve the Lost Pines subdivision.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. Any last comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll get these Platts, et cetera, signed and get them to the clerk, and we'll get all this wrapped up and filed with the clerk's office.
I'm going to do the state of the file.
You are. You are. Happy birthday. Hope you have a great party today. All right. Good luck on your completion.
You bet. Thank you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
We're going to show them how it's done in Precinct 2 out there. Be something to brag on.
All right, let's jump back, and we'll get in order here. Item number four, consider and possibly approve Luann Rollins as our wellness coordinator for Titus County employees. I think Commissioner Fitch is the one that got her to agree to do this. Why don't you tell us a little more about our wellness program that is offered for county employees as part of our health insurance?
All right. A lot of our free benefits for our health insurance and health insurance programs come through our Texas Association of Counties, and they want us to have a wellness coordinator for Titus County, and I have been acting as kind of a step in through the COVID and over the last year or so, and there really hadn't a lot of anything been going on. So now it's time to get back to work, talk to Luann Rollins about this. This is right up her alley, and so she'll be, kind of help guide us as employees for our benefits as far as diabetes, weight loss benefits, heart, blood pressure, also ERSTI. We got several companies through TAC and some of the health demonstrations that want to come do lunch and learns and stuff for our employees, and all these programs are free for our employees offered by Texas Association of Counties, which is a great deal. The healthier we are, the cheaper our insurance rates are going to stay. Also, they pay us back dividends and percentages for being participants in these health programs, so it's a win-win situation, and Luann was excited about it, and she's going to help. We're going to kind of team up on all this, and you'll be seeing things in your check stubs, and Cheryl's stuffing those envelopes. I'll go in and help, and we'll just pow, 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 put in new stuff in there. So we're going to get some emails and promote, and I'm excited about it. It's a lot of really cool, neat stuff that's extra benefits for the employees. It helps the county out and helps our rates out, too. So I make a motion that we approve Luann Rollins, and this is official. This will be official for TAC for their records, and they were requesting that, so make that motion.
Motion is made to appoint and approve Luann Rollins, our Ag Extension, one of our two reps there at the Ag Extension Office. So we're grateful to Luann for agreeing to do this. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go to item five, report from commissioners regarding roadwork status and what's happening in their precincts. I'll start with Commissioner Parchment, please.
Okay. We're still mowing and side cutting, trying to get that finished up, and we have finished reconstruction on County Road 1535 and have it ready for chip seal, and we are scheduled for this Tuesday, depending on the weather, to chip seal that road.
Commissioner Fitch?
All right, Precinct 2, covered a lot of ground this week. We, last two weeks, we've been scabbing and doing some paving and repairs on County Road 1220, 1240, 2120, 4560, 2922, and 2921, to name a few. So we also had a major ditch project with some culverts that was needed on 2921. We are starting on a big, a project where we're going to close the road and divert some traffic on 2360 to change out a culvert. We'll probably do that Wednesday or Thursday, depending on how the chip sealing goes this week. And we've been mowing. We got Behind the Airport mode, we got Blodgett-Mosello mode. We are on our way to Winfield starting next week and finish that last round of mowing, and that's all I know for now. Staying busy, and we're going to be busy chip sealing and as our equipment, you know, stays running, and everybody's staying busy, so be patient with everybody as we try to get advantage of this last warm days to get the roads in good shape for winter, and we're working as fast as we can to get to it.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Applewhite?
We've been, had some bunch of trees that we've had cut off the road that's on 3365. In fact, about four big ones, we're over there, till it, we tilled it up and got it back down, and yesterday we sealed it to get ready to chip seal, and like I said, we've been, plus, we've been trying to get our mowing, but we had setbacks, but as soon as they get, we got them all, both tractors fixed now, and we're going to finish the mowing. But like I said, 3365 is going to be our last project of chip sealing this year, and we'd, like I said, we sealed it yesterday, and I just want to thank the people for being patient with us.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Parker?
We have been doing some scabbing on County Road 4260 and 4325. Finished up our last round of mowing last week, and we've got all that taken care of, got the equipment cleaned up and ready, ready to go through the winter, and guys called me yesterday morning, said we've got a problem. We had done some scabbing over on 4325, and I said, what kind of problem? They said, you need to come look at it. Got over there, and the hogs had rooted up the road where we had had scalped the day before, and they first thought that it was, you know, somebody had tore it up, but it wasn't. We got to looking and got to watching what was going on, and the tracks were there and everything, so. There was two places, about two, three foot square, each one of them, that they had rooted the edge of the road out into the road there. So you know you got a hog problem when they're rooting up county roads, so.
Are they going from the sides?
They started side. We pulled the ditches, and I guess they smelled that fresh dirt and just started inside the road there and went out about two foot or so out into the road there. So anyway, but we're going to work with Dana and Jeff next week to do the final seal coating, and we should have all that done this week if the weather allows us to.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Let's move to item number six, considering possibly approve a change order related to our Justice Center project. This is a request to add a little bit more work to that job, which would entail replacing the formica on the two customer service windows. At each JP's end of the building, you've got a long counter that is, that protrudes on both sides so that both the employees from one side have a writing surface as well as those that come and pay their fines or whatever else they do there at the Justice Center. And we've got some old decaying formica, and to really do it justice, it does need to, no pun intended, to do it justice, it does need to have that formica replaced, and it's a fairly substantial job. They're going to have to lift up the glass off of each of those. You've got formica that's, what, 10, 12 feet long on both sides, and then it wraps into the office, so it kind of is an L shape. So it's a fairly elaborate job. Have I left out anything?
I'm sorry.
Have I left out anything? Any comments? All right. Everything proceeding over there looking good?
I'd like to hear that.
Would like to hear. Well, let's approve this, and then we'll let you just kind of keep talking on that as well. If you have any questions here, Steve's fairly knowledgeable about this. This is a submission from Stansel to remove and replace formica at two receiving counters and the resetting of the glass partitions. Total cost for this add-on is $3,350, $3,350, if you all are okay with that. And I'm not sure where that money will come from at this point. What do you think, Barbara? Because we're going to, we've got a fixed price on this project, and we've got a fixed amount of insurance proceeds, so this is just additional work that we would be approving that we really don't have budgeted.
So it's damaged before that it could be a tactic? Is that what you're telling me, we're replacing something?
Yeah, it's, I don't know that it's damaged, it's just suffered some, you know, use over the years, and therefore, like you often have, you have that formica peeling up, and it's just tacky looking.
It probably needs to come out of general, general county contingency, because he turns on the pipe work, it wasn't damaged in the other one.
Do we have enough monies in repair? Do we have enough monies in repair and maintenance that would, could, could absorb that? Could we try that first?
Okay.
Rather than a contingency pull? All right, if you all are okay with that, I need a motion. If you're not, we need an alternative.
Make a motion to approve the repair?
Motion to approve this change order. Commissioner Fitch?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
While you're here, Steve, if you'll give us an update.
Some good news, unless something else turns up that we're not aware of. Right now, as of this morning, electricians are going to be finishing up all the electrical work today. They're going to start installing the AC vents. Everything's there. They're just going to start installing the down vents for the air conditioning system. Once they get that done, they'll be turning the air conditioning system on, hopefully about tomorrow anyway. And then next week, they'll have AC technicians come in and equalize all the rooms where the same amount of pressure is in all the rooms. And it's some of that technical stuff that, you know, one room's not getting more air than another, another room, that everything is equal. And it doesn't interfere with the individual dampers for different controls. That should be taken care of by next week. Ceiling tile replacement, that should be finished with it this week as well. Then, if all goes well, the flooring placement will begin next week. And it's looking, of course, after that, they have the replacement of the benches. I understand that they're going to kind of be cleaning some of that, the woodwork up and, you know, not any extra cost to us at that. And with the approval of the replacement of the counters, they'll start on end. Doug Dunn's got the sample tiles. We've got it picked out, and she's going to get them.
Sample tiles of formica?
For the formica, yes.
Are any of those LED fixtures in the ceiling yet?
The, all the LED lights are on, and it has got a good crisp lighting in there. It's much better than what it was. And it's not even completed yet.
Good. Okay. So you're pleased with progress?
I'm pleased with it, you know. Wish we could have snapped your fingers and had it done already, but workmanship is, is well, is well. And they've been communicating real good with us on things that's going on and been answering their, all the questions.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Great work.
All right, we have completed item seven. We'll jump to item number eight, considering possibly approve a road maintenance bond for the Belf subdivision. We dealt with Emily Belf about three years ago. This is her subdivision out at Lake Bob Sandlin called The Point, and $4,056. She had previously put up cash in lieu of a bond back before we had higher requirements on the roads. And this is the second part of some of the stipulations we put into road requirements, is that not only do they need to build the road to county specs, we need to have at least a year's passage of time to be sure that that road stands up and that there's, you know, that the road really does prove up to be constructed properly. And so that maintenance bond is what is put up by the developer to ensure that that road does hold up. If I said that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
And so you've agreed, you've got an agreement with Ms. Belf to put that money up, or is she just going to, are we just going to refund part of her existing bond that's on deposit?
We refund half of it. We'll retain half for one year. And what I understand, they're going to want to keep that private anyway, but it is built up to county standards if the homeowners change their mind someday. But they're wanting to do a homeowners association, HOA, and have a gated community. Went out there during the construction a couple of times. On the paving day, they laid down another two inches, so that road has eight inches of sub flex base for the road. And it also has, had, supposed to have a minimum of two inches of cold mix or a chip seal. And she put a hot mix minimum, it's like three inches compacted up to a four inch. The company that showed up, they really laid it down with the laydown machine and rolled it with a couple of different rollers. I mean, it's really heavy duty. So she got her money's worth on that. So I'm really proud of it. I'm really excited about it. Sure, it just changed it from night to day out there. So, so we have that $4,056 to refund to her, and so the other $4,056 is the maintenance agreement that was on her original agreement with the county, and we'll hold that for one year. And we'll make sure that there's not any minor repairs or maintenance on that road and inspect it, and we can give her that back in a year. So I make a motion that we go ahead and give her back the first half of that construction grant, construction bond money.
All right. Second, on that motion, Commissioner Parchman, any questions or comments? All right, all in favor of approval of this maintenance bond for Belf subdivision, say aye.
Aye.
Continuing on with road discussions, we have item number nine, considering possibly accept a donation from a company called Integrated Demolition and Remediation. This is for road repairs due to their heavy truck use on our County Road 2500. Is this all related to the tear down of the power plant?
And implosion and all the materials coming out of there.
Yeah, lots of heavy duty work going on, and Commissioner Fitch has gotten these guys to agree to pay for the damage that they've caused on County Road 2500 in the amount of Would like to approve accepting that donation, which is their way of contributing to the damages that they've caused on that road.
Make a motion that we accept the donation, approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discuss. This is not a action item.
Oh, it needs to be action. Sure, we had, we had to put it back again on the, I had a paperwork for it, too, that needed to be signed. Did you have that, James?
Okay.
Well, yeah, this is not an action item. We're going to discuss it, but we can't take action on it. Discuss allowing KSA Engineers, Inc., the engineer company for the city of Mount Pleasant, to enter property that's owned by the county for the purpose of gathering survey data for drainage analysis and to establish any visual existing right of way. Why does it even need Commissioner's Court approval rather than just approval by that commissioner?
They just want to be official, and they drew up a form saying that we give them permission to, in the future, bore underneath. It's actually at a railroad track crossing. So the, right there on the signal on the east side of that railroad track, we own a tiny fraction of an acre. And they, and they may come across a piece of it, a little corner of it, if they bore a, it's going to be a sewer line that's going out to a new pump station add-ons out at, behind the airport. So if they come, they have five different routes coming through that side of town. This just happens to be one of the routes that they may choose. So every landowner has to agree that, yes, we're coming, we're going to come through. They're actually going to bore underneath it and all the way to the other side underneath Highway 271, so we'll never know it. But they wanted us to give them approval, which is basically a utility. So we really, they don't have to have it, they just want to be official.
When I read this, my assumption was you just wanted to let us know about it and you were going to approve it. It doesn't say anything about Commissioner's Court approval. In my opinion, this is a decision of the commissioner, unless you all see it differently and want to get it back on the, on the agenda.
Usually, we just deal with our own utility things, and it's just, it's pretty simple. That's why I told them, too, so I can sign it. I'm just going to tell you all about it. And it's pretty common for whatever utilities, you use those right of ways and such.
Well, I'm going to read this. This is what they're asking for. Permission for right of way entry for land survey. Permission is hereby granted to enter my property to perform land surveys, including to set and survey the control points and locate property corners on behalf of the city of Mount Pleasant. I understand that KSA engineers will repair and restore or pay the cost of repairing and restoring any property damaged as a result of the survey activities conducted on my property. If to be repaired or restored, the property will be repaired or restored as nearly as possible to its condition prior to such survey work. Any such damage requests must be submitted in writing to Brian Pritchett, who is with KSA. I don't know what kind of damage surveying could, could call.
I'll tell you where it's at. It's on the south side of Prefort's property, there's a road that cuts over the railroad track there, right across from Highland Park Baptist Church. So the, where that railroad track is, the east side, right down about the middle, the edge of the railroad rail, the road right there, and about 10 foot on each side of the road, the piece of property is about as big as this room, this courtroom. And they're just going to make sure, survey it. They may cut through there, you know, boring this line possibly, so.
Well, again, this is not an action item. You have told us about that. That is my opinion. If you feel differently about this than, after you think about it, you get it on a future agenda, otherwise, it doesn't appear to me to be asking for Commissioner's Court approval.
Okay. I don't think we'll have any problem with it. Y'all think I need to make it an action item or I just approve it? It's pretty normal utility work, so.
Well, again, this is survey work specifically.
Yeah, it's survey now. They're not even going to do anything. They have five choices.
Saying anything about utility work.
We're going to give them permission for that, then.
Okay. Let the record reflect that we discussed, and item number 10, and that decision making, if any, will be handled by Commissioner Fitch on behalf of his precinct. All right, we have taken care of item number 11 previously. We are now down to item number 12, consider and possibly approve a resolution for 2021 tax office exemptions and discounts. Melissa, what do you have to tell us this year? This is something we do every year that approves the discounts that are available to certain folks within the county that helps them on their tax rates. If, if you're okay, I'll just read some of this. And these will not be new to any of you on the court, other than maybe Jeff. But Jeff, each year, we, we approve these discounts that we get. And as you'll, as you'll remember, that, for the county taxes, if you pay your taxes in October, as opposed to waiting to January, you get a 3% discount. If you pay them during the month of November, you get a 2% discount. If you pay them in December, you get a 1% discount. If you pay them in the month due, which is January, you don't get any discount. Next is a homestead exemption of 20%, which is allowed by the state law, but not less than $5,000. So again, everybody gets at least that $5,000 in exemption. If your house is more, you get more based on that 20% allowance. The next segment here, the code permits an exemption of an additional amount for those over 65 years of age on their homestead. The Commissioner's Court has been granting $15,000, which would apply to the 2021 tax year. Next, persons also under 65 years of age, if they are 100% disabled according to Social Security records, an exemption of $10,000 on their homestead for the tax year. And then the property tax code also permits us to adopt a tax freeze for persons 65 years of age or older on their homesteads. So there's nothing new in there. If you choose to continue to allow these types of discounts for our citizens, then we will need to do our annual resolution approving such.
I make a motion, we approve the exemptions and discounts.
All right. Commissioner Parker makes a motion to approve those exemptions and discounts that were just enumerated.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. Is there any questions or discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This will need your signature, so I'm going to pass that down so you can begin that. Item number 13, considering possibly approve a 2022 Titus County Resolution Regarding the Indigent Defense Program. Indigent defense is a subject that relates to our judicial activities here within the county, in the county court, criminal court, and the district criminal court. When a defendant is unable to provide, due to financial constraints, their own attorney to represent them, the Texas Indigent Defense Commission, in cooperation with the county, provides monies that pays these attorneys at a reduced rate to provide that coverage. Let me read you this, and this is an annual grant program, and the amount of that grant varies from year to year. We don't always know how much that grant's going to be, but we're glad to get any help from the state. It does not cover all the cost of indigent defense by a long shot, but every little bit Whereas, under the provisions of the government code, counties are eligible to receive grants from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. Whereas, the grant program will assist the county in the implementation and improvement of these defense services. And whereas, the Commissioner's Court has agreed that in the event of loss or misuse of the funds that we receive from TIDC, we agree to give those back. Now be it resolved and ordered that the judge of the county, county judge of the county is designated as the authorized official to apply for, accept, decline, modify, or cancel the grant application for the Indigent Defense Formula Grant Program. Be it resolved that the county auditor is the designated financial officer for this grant. I hope that you will approve this and allow us to get what little monies are coming to us, and I assure you that we will administer these properly and not be liable for giving any of this money back. A typical amount of this grant each year might be how much?
About $20,000, but last year, it was about $23,000.
Yeah, we got, sometimes you get a secondary kick in, depending upon, I don't know what's going on at the state, but sometimes we've gotten more. And I think we've gotten more than this in the past, but again, it's a, it's a far cry from footing the whole bill, but we'll accept it. So I'd like your acceptance of this agreement to take these funds from TIDC.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any questions on this? All in favor, say aye. Okay, we are down to item number 14, to approve our oral and written reports.
Make that motion.
Motion to approve these reports that Barbara has provided for you is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 15, Cheryl has provided you with the treasurer's report.
I make a motion, we approve the treasurer's report.
Commissioner Parchman makes a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 16, approve budget amendments. While I'm getting to those, we'll finish up these signatures. And we are into the new year of budget amendments. You think we'll have any more related to last year in the days ahead?
I think we may have a few more.
Okay. Still a few more cleanup amendments coming. These are all new, and so therefore, this falls under number 2022, designating the, the budget year, number 001. And there are multiple components to this that I will run down with you. The first one is $7,987 to recognize revenue from the state recording that Savin's grant we have talked about in previous meetings, the state, statewide victim notification services. We get $7,900 that we spend with a priest. We get $7,900 that we spend with Apprease, Apprease, Inc. That's just recognizing that coming revenue that we have been notified of. The next component of this is related to precinct one, where we are taking $22,000 out of road materials and putting it into capital expenditures. $22,000, if you'll remember, that matches up with the John Deere shredder that we were buying after we trade in that Rhino shredder. So is that the net cost, or was that, that's the gross cost?
That's the gross cost.
That's the gross cost.
That item is on order, not printed last, last month, but it's on order until February. So that's why, I did one last month, but now we have another one this month for whatever number.
For in the new year. Got you, got you. The next component of this number 001 amendment, we've got higher than anticipated salary costs for the court coordinator that we previously approved for the district judges. And Judge Ralston said that in order to hire the right person, we need some additional money. So we're having to pull $7,025 out of contingency to utilize towards salary, FICA, Medicare, and retirement of the new court coordinator. So the explanation is increase in salary and benefits with an offsetting decrease county contingency for salary and court, for the court coordinator for the district judges. The next component is coming from the sheriff forfeiture fund, increase of $1,500 to narcotic investigations with an offsetting decrease to other expense to facilitate reporting requirements for narcotic investigation. So that's not money being pulled from contingency, that's rearranged within the sheriff's department. The next component is also a sheriff's department item, and this is to increase building maintenance with offsetting decrease to general county contingency to reflect historical amount budgeted for building maintenance that was reallocated in the previous year to capital outlay. That's a mouthful, so help me with that one.
Two years ago, the sheriff through the court had some improvements to their electronic system with new electronics. That was not finished at the end of the year, so we rolled it to the next year. But when we rolled it to the next year, where the place where sheriff had money in his, in his budget was in building maintenance. So we moved it out of building maintenance and put it in capital outlay. So we made a correction for this. If you go back to look, we made a correction for this after we did our budget amendments in June, our budget hearings. So now what's happened, when you look at their budget, that money that's not in their building lineup, it's reduced by that same amount. So it's just putting that back in there so that they won't be, you know, short in building maintenance.
Okay.
It's confusing, Judge, because it's costing out great this year.
Okay. Elaine, I have you, Barbara. Next component here is maintenance, this is related to our chip sealer that was damaged. We rented another one. We've got the rental costs, we've got the repair costs, and fortunately, we have some insurance proceeds. So this, these two components relate to that situation. $18,100 recognizing the insurance proceeds and the expenditure to rent that chip sealer, and then recognizing $73,800 of insurance proceeds with those monies going towards the repair of the damaged chip sealer. So $18,100 plus $73,800 coming from insurance proceeds. And then lastly, we have the official recognition here of the HAVA, or the HAVA, security grant. And you'll recall that Pam Holmes asked to be able to spend $19,963, or excuse me, yeah, $19,963 additional dollars on election security, which we approved back in July for the electronic upgrades that particularly protect the storage room back behind the annex in the southwest corner of that building. That gives her protection there to be able to monitor and make sure anybody coming and going into that very important storage room that hires all kinds of sensitive things like equipment is well protected, and that was paid for with those grant monies. And so we're recognizing the use of that fund balance grant. That's all. You want me to go over any of those others, or if you're happy with that? That is about an eight, an eight component amendment number 001.
Make a motion, we approve the amendments.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 17, sign pay orders and approve payments. Time to pay bills again.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker to do just that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're down to closing comments. The only item that I have is Barbara reminded me this week that we had previously, many months ago, approved some repairs to our annex restrooms. We were going to be replacing sinks and tearing out old countertops and replacing them with pedestal-type sinks and such. And Mr. McDermott with Big Dog has not even begun those projects. I don't know why, but when I contacted him, he's just quote backed up and is happy for us to find somebody else to do that work. I'm very disappointed in that, in that decision by Big Dog that we've got that bid that we were counting on, and for whatever reason, he is saying he can't get to it. But that's where we are. I have not pursued any alternative to that. I still think that work needs to be done. It was a relatively, I think it was less than $5,000, but it's something that will need to be done there eventually. But we've got a big project going on right now, and I would suggest that since substantial construction would likely be hopefully a participant in something like that, as well as some others, that we hold off until we finish the project at the Justice Center. But just letting you know, Big Dog is not going to complete that work. That's all I had. Commissioner Parker?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Applewhite?
I want to thank again the 4H young men and ladies for participating in 4H, and we appreciate what you do, and I'm just proud of all of y'all. And Callie, I appreciate what you do, and Blaine, I appreciate what you and your family do to help these kids out. You're a really good asset, and I do appreciate that, sir.
Is that Dad in the back? Is that the father back in the back? Okay. Good job.
And some more 4H'er back there too, another little young lady, she'd be in 4H. She likes those pigs too, I bet, too.
Oh, yeah.
We need to get her going. Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate y'all. Y'all just take off rest of the day, don't go back to school. We just, we approve that right now. All in favor?
He'll give you, he'll give you a note.
Anyway, glad to have y'all. Thank you. Proud of y'all. Proud of the whole thing. Callie, thank you for everything.
That it? Okay. I think we're done here. Anybody else have a comment or question? All right. If we are done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.